Good evening. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration has now called for order. The first action item is approval of the minutes of April 2nd, 2012. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you. Just because our chair for this committee is with us and has had a long day, so if we, your indulgence, we're going to move to the adoption of a salary plan for titles within the executive compensation plan, item two on the policy calendar. I will ask Vice Chancellor Ginger Waters to present the items.
Madam Chair, I am pleased to present item one B two, the adoption of a salary plan for titles in the executive compensation plan. First, I'd like to give some background. Our executive compensation salary plan requires that we conduct a market analysis every five years. We last did one in 2006. As in the past, we engaged the services of Mercer to conduct the analysis. Mercer issued a report in April of this year which recommended new salaries for the ECP titles. We reviewed the recommendations and decided not to accept the range minimum salaries because it would have resulted in raises for members whose salaries fell below the new minimums. Instead, we froze the minimums at the level they are now and only raised the maximums. While we are putting forward this plan now, there is no plan to increase salaries at this time. The Compensation Committee of the Board reviewed the plan and recommended that it be brought forward. And might I just point out that some other changes to the plan, because it was not just salaries, there's an establishment of a new tier for CUNY-wide professional schools that are headed by a dean instead of a president. There's the authority to set up a 457-F plan for deferred compensation. And there was codification of titles that are currently in use like Associate Vice Chancellor and Senior University Dean. Madam Chair, I recommend approval of item one B two.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. So what these are, this is just the normal type of survey that takes place that assesses whether or not the ranges of the positions are in line and competitive with the market.
That's correct.
And so therefore, by not lowering the minimum, it doesn't force us into giving raises which, you know, we wouldn't be ready to do at this time.
That's absolutely correct. The Mercer study actually recommended salaries that had higher minimums than people who are currently in place.
And the last time this survey was conducted as a regular course of business was?
In 2006, we did a market analysis. We then began another one in 2010, and that whole process never was completed, and so we just picked up from where we began with some age adjustment to the salary ranges.
And my last question, Madam Chair, is that the, normally, do you have, like, for example, a timetable for when you do the competitive survey? Like, is it every three years, every five years, or what necessitated you to do this at this time?
The plan says that every fi -- no, less than every five years, we need to do a market analysis.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I served along with you and Trustee Loda on a subcommittee for reviewing compensation, and I'd just like to say a few words in support of the adoption of this plan. First of all, it's, we've made much today even of the fact that Mercer's study indicated that we were, our minimums were below where they need to be, and we actually needed to reject that portion of the plan in order not to get into a situation of automatic wage increases. And while I think the Board can feel some degree of satisfaction in that we are being fiscally prudent in difficult and uncertain times, we should also not lose sight of the fact that we are going to find ourselves in a position that we frankly already are in, of not being competitive when these positions need to be filled. And we are finding ourselves and will remain in the position of being in an anomaly of longstanding employees in this, these particular job classifications are disadvantaged because new recruits are by definition going to need to be marked to market, to use that phrase. And that creates a two-tier system. If you are new and have not worked at CUNY, you'll find your compensation will be higher. If you were here and lived through both turbulent and good times, your compensation is being constrained. I would urge adoption of the report even in spite of that fact that I believe to be a defect in our current compensation system. Compensation unfortunately takes on, especially compensation for administrators and managers in an academic environment, often takes on an unpleasant political gloss. And we have bowed to that reality, but I do not believe that it is necessarily the principled position. It is both the necessary and expedient position, but I don't think we should confuse that with being particularly principled. It is what we need to do in this environment. I would urge this committee in the future on the issue of compensation to do what we successfully have done with tuition, which is to adopt a rational compensation policy. I said tuition, I meant compensation. Adapt a rational compensation policy because we are only as good in the final analysis as our faculty, who are receiving collectively bargained for increases irrespective of other issues, which is appropriate, nobody's faulting that. But I don't think we need to create a second class of individuals who are the administrators and managers simply because it is expedient to do it. And if we could ever come up with a plan that is rational and allows for reasonable market adjustments at the appropriate times and in appropriate amounts, I think we should do that. But in lieu of that, I would urge this committee and then ultimately, if, the Board, to adopt this report.
Thank you. And I would just like to add that reading is fundamental. I think a number of us have been receiving emails, et cetera, suggesting that what this plan does is, quote, "giving raises," and this plan does not do that. And so I would encourage those who exercise, and I encourage everyone to exercise their right to express their opinion, but to make sure that they understand what it is that the Board is approving and what we're doing is, you said, we're approving ranges and we're not approving pay raises at this time.
I'm sorry, but the representative seems to have gotten stuck in traffic, the faculty representative. I wondered at what point this scale would be applied, would kick in. When would it be used?
We have to go through a very lengthy process with bringing this to the controller of the state of New York, and it has to go through other approval processes. It probably could take, in this environment, several months to get this approved at all. So at a minimum, if the Board approves this at the end of June, not before October, November, do I really think that this would get itself approved? That's your question.
I guess I meant, when would you use it?
I mean, when would raises be? We're not even contemplating raises at this particular time at all.
And not for new persons, new hires either?
What we, anybody that we bring in needs to conform to the existing ranges that we have in place. This would not be appropriate for people starting in September because it's not going to be approved at that point.
Okay. Any other, yes?
Yeah, just for the record, I just want to say that I'm fully in support of the review because I'd be, I'm fairly levered that the review should be conducted time to time to adjust and adapt to the current lifestyle in the process. But it's just that I have a little concern because, and this concern is mainly based on the fact that we had a rational tuition increase. And I do understand that this is not an increase of any kind of salary. It's just a review of the range, and that's normal. But based on those, as you said, there's some misinformation already going around, and that might create, that already not might already start to create some problem, especially on the student side where students feel like they just raised their tuition and they're raising the chancellor's salary, which is not true, but that's the misconception that is going around right now. So I also believe that this, the way people are trying to look at this is, once the ranges are approved, it's going to create the opportunity of actually increasing the salary, which is going to happen eventually sometime when, we don't know yet. But if this happened in a time where the tuition, the incremental tuition is still going on, that's going to create a big problem. Because as you realize, this past year, we were in a big turmoil when it comes to student activism, where students were, you know, marching and, you know, saying stuff they don't want to see done. So my concern is that this might just fuel that type of movement that might happen, especially with the misinformation that is going around. So I don't know exactly how we can do this. At this point of time, my position on this is, I would prefer, I'm not going to vote against it or for it, I prefer to bring it back to my colleagues so we can have full discussion, so they can fully understand all the aspects of it before we actually say yes or no to it. So that's going to be pretty much my position on the issue.
Well, thank you. And that's why we encourage the discussions that we have at these meetings so that you have full information. So are there any other, are there any questions, comments? Call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, thank you for accommodating my schedule by putting it.
Thank you very much for your work on this issue. We will now go back to the order of the calendar. Calling on Vice Chancellor Rick Shafer for item one B one.
These are amendments to the university's policy on the acceptable use of computer resources. This policy was originally adopted five years ago following the work of a task force of faculty administrators, college presidents from around the university. And we've had, by and large, very smooth and uncontroversial experience with the existing policy. But over time, it became clear that a few matters needed to be clarified, other matters needed to be brought up to date, particularly in light of changing technology. And so these amendments were drafted. They have been discussed several times with representatives of the university faculty senate, more recently once with representatives of the professional staff congress, and I think are now ready for consideration by this committee. The resolution that you have summarizes the major changes. The changes appear, when you look at the redlined version, to be perhaps more substantial than, in fact, they are when you consider the bullet points on the resolution. And I don't think it's necessary to go through each of the bullet points you have of the resolution. The one point I did want to make is that as a result of the most recent conversations with both the university faculty senate and the professional staff congress, a few additional changes were made. And so you have in your package, in addition to a new redlined version, which I confess is a little hard to follow, they always are, you have another version which just has a few yellow highlights on it. Those yellow highlights show the changes from the document that was originally sent out to you whenever it was, a week or so ago. And so you now can compare what's currently before you with, and there are only three or four changes from what went out. And as I said, that was the result of some last-minute conversations with representatives of those two faculty organizations. And so that's really it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. May I have a vote for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Comments? There being none, may I call for all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move to item three, the creation of the titles Research Assistant Professor, Research Associate Professor, and Research Professor, Vice Chancellor Waters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to present item one B three, creation of the titles Research Assistant Professor, Research Associate Professor, and Research Professor. There are three resolves in the item. One resolve creates the titles and incorporates them into Article 6.1 of the bylaws. The second outlines the duties of the titles and lists the qualifications for assuming the positions. The third requests that the Board waive the requirement for notice. The purpose of the proposal is to create a new title series comprised of the titles Research Assistant, Associate, and Full Professor, which will bring the university's title structure for faculty in line with that of many research-oriented institutions. These new titles are distinct from the current faculty titles in that the focus of the titles is on research. Regular teaching assignments are not a component of the job description. Appointments may be made either within or outside of academic departments. These are 12-month, non-tenure-track positions with renewable term appointments of one to three years durations. The proposed title definitions and qualifications, if approved, will be incorporated into a code of practice established for instructional staff titles by my office. And then we requested the Board waive the requirements that these amendments be noticed in order to have the titles available for use as soon as possible and to give us the opportunity to work over the summer to consult and clarify specifics pertaining to the titles. Madam Chair, I present item one B three.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussions? Professor Cooper?
Vice Chancellor, have you given any thought to the process by which these people will be sought? What department review will occur of their qualifications? What sorts of faculty input there will be?
We have.
Since they're not necessarily in a department?
We are, well, for one thing, we expect that these will be primarily used in the science disciplines, so that's the intent originally going in. But there's a lot of work that I mentioned in my explanation that needs to be done over the summer, where we really think through exactly those issues. And I would hope to have consultations with the faculty senate in order to work through some of these issues, yes.
I would imagine the union might be interested as well.
The union as well.
The discussion with the union, I think, will revolve around how many of these positions they would feel comfortable with, because these are non-tenured positions. But I would set this discussion in a much broader context. We have been moving incrementally now for close to a decade to bring this university more in line with the practices of the best research universities in the United States. It started in part with the designation of 2005 through 2015 as being the decade of science at the university. It followed with a very, very serious capital program for new science facilities. That followed with a very concerted effort to attract the most able and promising scholar teachers in the sciences and other things that we've been doing along the way, the capital campaigns to generate the kinds of resources to supplement monies that are provided through tuition and state and local support. This particular action is also developed to attract people who are not interested in a tenured position. They are purely people interested in doing research. They may do some teaching, but if you look at all of the major state universities and certainly the private research universities.
Yes.
They are dominated with a lot of faculty who have these kinds of titles. And we need to do the same thing. And so it's part of an overall scheme to orient the university in terms of our science efforts to be in line with those kinds of values and those kinds of themes. And when they are hired, they'll go through similar practices as we hire faculty today. I mean, the departments will obviously need to recommend such people, and depending upon how many of these positions we have and what the resources of the campuses are, decisions will be made. There's nothing special about a governance issue here. It will have to be peer-reviewed, and that's the way it will be done.
Jillian, do you want to say something?
Jillian, where is Jillian? Jillian, do you want to say something beyond what I just said?
I think what you said is perfect. I mean, often a case example in previous institutions I've been at is that, you know, sometimes you get a high-level researcher, bring a big group with them, and usually they have a senior person that is moved into this position so that they can be PI on grants. So we also have this position for people who are head of large core facilities, which we're planning for the ASRC.
And the ASRC is going to be purely a research entity. So it'd be appropriate that the people in the various categories, neuroscience, photonics, nano-science.
Nanoscience.
Nano-science. Or all of, well, there are about five of those areas would be appropriate. Yes?
I just hope, and as I'm sure is the intent, and as I've discussed with Vice Chancellor Waters, that we make sure that we're using this for the kinds of high-quality people at ASRC, because unfortunately, when you create a title like this, there can be temptation for other campuses that may not have the same level of quality to sort of lom on and use it as a way of rewarding favored people. I know that is not your intent at all, but I do think that it is something that we need to be aware of going forward.
Without question.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item four, adoption of the title definition and qualifications for the title Einstein Professor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is mine also. I am pleased to present item one B four, the adoption of the title and title definition and qualifications for the Einstein professor. The title Einstein professor has been in existence in the university since 1979. The proposed title definition of qualifications is presented to the Board for approval to be, and it will be incorporated into the code of practice for instructional staff titles by my office. The university reserves appointment as an Einstein professor to an elite cadre of outstanding scholars in scientific disciplines. The persons appointed as Einstein professors will be engaged in teaching and research, and Einstein professors may be responsible for directing institutes or other collaborative initiatives. Anyone who is appointed to an Einstein professor must be an eminent and exceptional scholar in a scientific discipline with an outstanding national and international reputation in his or her field. Madam Chair, I present item one B four.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
I'd like to comment, actually, before that.
Okay.
And this is just also something discussed with Vice Chancellor Waters while the Einstein...
We don't have a motion on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So when I, so move, it's been moved, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, now we have comments.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to suggest that if we're creating titles here, while I certainly will support this because we obviously have the Einstein professor on the books already, but I think in terms of if we're positioning ourselves as a major university, I think this is not the best use of really our resources for naming because while apparently this exists in '79 because some legislator wanted to impress their constituents with the name Einstein, and at some point there was state funding, I gather there is no longer. And CUNY has, I looked, CUNY has about six or seven Nobel winners who got their undergraduate educations here. I believe, based on my quick look, it appears that even three of them are still alive, still with us. And I think that if we are going to be moving toward ASRC and moving toward status as a major science research university, then we are better off honoring people with connections with us rather than Albert Einstein, whose major work was a century ago, and whose U.S. affiliations were with Princeton, and who had no affiliations, as far as I know, either with New York or with CUNY. So I think a Leon Letterberg professor, or there are a number of others, I think would be a much better way to start establishing us as an institution that has this tradition of educating great scientists and also as something that indicates that we have confidence in our own, really in our own university.
Jay, with all due respect, I disagree totally with what you just said. The purpose of the Einstein professor is to recruit the most outstanding scholars that this university can get, independent of any kind of structural constraint on where they were educated, whether they were educated abroad, educated at Berkeley, or educated at CCNY. I don't think that's the point. The point is to really attract truly great scholars. As we attracted Dennis Sullivan, who is a world-class apologist, he had no affiliation with CUNY at all. He did his work at Princeton. As we recruited Morton Dunn, who followed Andre Akrovos, who were trained at University of California and Harvard. We are going to attract the very, very best people that we can. And to put constraints on where somebody did their work, I don't think is really appropriate at all.
Yep. Okay, if I can just respond, that was not what I meant. I certainly support the chancellor's goal of attracting the best scholars from all over. I'm talking about what the chairs should be named for, and I am suggesting that if we are naming a chair for Albert Einstein, we are showing a lack of confidence in our own system. And why applaud an Isaac Newton professor, or a Carl Friedrich Gauss professor, or an Archimedes professor. So I think that I agree, I believe that we'd be better served in attracting kind of top-level scholars that the chancellor is talking about if we look at really doing what other universities do and other major research universities do, which is have names that are related to, that name their chairs after people who have some relationship with their university.
We have that here, but if you look at other major universities, they use titles associated with very eminent people, independent of where they were educated, which is the point again.
Often they will be donors, and so...
Yes, and they are.
Okay.
And they are. And we have plenty of them here, and we'll continue to do that as our campaigns generate steam. One unfortunate thing is that they used to be funded. Now we will have to pay for it, but the actual cost would be an incremental cost rather than a total cost, which is a little better.
Professor Cooper?
Piece of information, I'm vaguely remembering when this was passed by the state legislature. Was it only for scientists? I thought we had some, I thought we had an Einstein professor in either political science or history at the graduate school, from my role.
I don't believe so. I'm sorry?
It was only science?
Yeah, there have been others. There have been other name professorships, but the Einstein chairs, both at SUNY and CUNY, are even in the natural sciences, not even in the social sciences.
So we will look at that and, just to have, you know, to clarify that for you by...
I mean, there are outstanding others.
By the next meeting. So it's been moved in second. May I say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I will now call on President Scott Evanbeck to present item one B five, approval of an interim governance plan for the new community college.
I'm honored to present the governance plan for...
Put your, just press the, when did he...
Thank you. I'm honored to present the governance plan for the new community college of CUNY. Our first class has been admitted, and they'll join us for a bridge program beginning August 20. As we speak, the building is being wired, the furniture is ordered, folks have moved into our one-stop. We've hired most of the faculty. The librarian is busy assembling our information commons. A very key component, however, is to put into place an interim governance plan. I would like to thank Vice Chancellor Shafer, Stephanie Benchman, and Provost Moran for their work in leading this effort, which involved faculty and staff from across the new community college. We've had several iterations. I believe it's a model appropriate for our context at this time, and I'm honored to be able to present it.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval? May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Madam Chair.
It's been moved in second. Any conversation, discussion? There being none, may I have, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we have one abstention. It's been approved with one abstention. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Well, Karen Steele, Vice President for Academic Affairs at Queensborough Community College, please join us to present item one B six.
This is a proposal for revising Queensborough's governance plan, which I believe from our faculty executive committee chair has not been revised since, in 20 years. I don't think any of the parts of the proposal are particularly controversial. One large exclusion is this section on student government, and we took all those provisions out because it's superseded by the Board's policies there. There are some changes which include regarding who can vote in departmental elections. We extended that so that faculty members who are lecturers and instructors in the department could vote, as long as they haven't been non-reappointed. Previously, there was a restriction, they had to have been there for a certain amount of time. There were some changes in the academic review committee, for example. There's now a provision which puts into place what we've actually been doing, that is that a, if a faculty member requests a hearing on, say, a non-reappointment, then that committee, which is a faculty elected committee, the committee that meets with that faculty member would not include a member of that person's department. So those are some of the kinds of changes here. This was, involved a huge amount of work on the faculty governance and administration and student governance. There was a tremendous effort to get the required faculty votes. The faculty did vote very much in favor of this. The student government also voted in favor, but there wasn't enough of the students, there weren't enough students voting. However, the President and the faculty have both approved, so we would request you to approve it as well.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions, comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Thank you very much. I will now call on Martin Moskowitz, that's Senior Vice President and Provost at City College, to present item one B seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The resolution reads that the amendment of the governance plan of the City College attached hereto as Appendix One be adopted effective July 1, 2012. In the interest of brevity, I will read a brief explanation. The amendment, of course, received full governance approval through our Faculty Senate. The proposed amendment states that if the government, if the department chairperson cannot chair the Promotions Committee because of his or her rank, the department faculty eligible to vote shall elect a member of the highest rank to the chairperson of the Promotions Committee, rather than have the most senior person automatically serve as chairperson.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments, questions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I do number nine, since I'm at the table?
Absolutely.
It is my pleasure and an honor to present this resolution that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the naming of the Martin and Michelle Cohen Dean of Science, Cohen Professorships, and the Cohen Fund for Science. I'll read the first paragraph of the explanation, and would be delighted to read the rest of it. Martin Cohen, a 1970 City College alumnus and his wife Michelle, pledged $10 million to the City College of New York's 21st Century Foundation for use by the Division of Science. This gift will create the college's first endowed deanship, at least two endowed professorships, and a fund for science intended to fund the startup costs of the dean and the professors. In recognition of their generosity, the college requests that the deanship and professorships be respectively named, the Martin and Michelle Cohen Dean of Science, and the Cohen Professorships in perpetuity, and the Cohen Fund for Science for the duration of its existence.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
No movement, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. You can stay there, because you have a number, you have making...
Waivers.
Waivers.
Yes.
Waivers.
I just want to congratulate you and President Lisa Doniano Coico for getting a wonderful $10 million gift, and the way in which those dollars are going to be utilized. I know Marty Cohen for a long time, and he loves City College. He's worked very hard. He did not study science at CCNY, but went on to have a brilliant career in financial services, and this is really terrific, a compliment to him.
Thank you, Chancellor. I'll pass your comments to the President.
So you can do your three faculty appointments with waivers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All three request the same waiver. These are three stellar individuals whom we wish to appoint. All of them are at a stage where they would have obtained tenure at their institutions in the next few months. They would not come without tenure. I can go through their merits. I'll tell you only a single item for each. Each one of them has an NSF Career Award, which is given to just the smallest sliver of the best folks. They are Dr. Deborah August, who is a biomedical engineer, will be joining our biomedical engineering faculty. She is currently at Harvard. Dr. Marco Castaldi, who is a chemical engineer, is interested in green chemistry and new ways to create fuels from biomass. He comes from Columbia University. And Dr. David Yaruzalmi, a highly eminent biomolecular crystallographer, who also comes to us from Harvard. We're requesting waivers in order to allow us to give, to appoint them with tenure.
Congratulations. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We will now return to our agenda. I will call Abby Lehman, Manager of Alumni Relations and Communications at the Law School, for item one B eight.
Thank you. I'm pleased to present this request for a naming resolution for the Dave Fields Auditorium.[1110.00][1110.00](APPLAUSE). Dave Fields is CUNY Law's greatest champion as the Staff Director of the Queens President's Advisory Commission for the Establishment of the University School of Law at Queens College. He was instrumental in making the law school a reality. Dave was not only front and center in moving forward plans for the law school, he was also behind the scenes, working tirelessly and passionately to ensure that CUNY Law, CUNY established the nation's first law school devoted exclusively to public interest law. Now more than three decades later, Dave, University Dean and Special Counsel to the Chancellor, continues to play a critical role within the law school as an advisor, advocate, and parliamentarian on the faculty. In 2012, Dave bequeathed $1 million to CUNY Law to support student scholarships and faculty and staff development, which will have an enormous impact on CUNY Law's ability to provide critical financial support to students and faculty alike. In recognition of his extraordinary service and his generous bequest, it is recommended that the auditorium in law school's new building at Two Court Square be named the Dave Fields Auditorium.
Thank you.[1181.12][1181.12](APPLAUSE). May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Just a sort of discussion, Madam Chair, before we do that. Can't see Dave Fields behind that...
You want to come up with a tip.
When I was a student at Queens College, and Dave was there also, I remember the vision that Dave had regarding the law school. I remember his great counsel to many students who were there at that time, and his mentorship. I tear up when I think about the fact that they'll, will have an auditorium named after you, because it is such a fitting legacy for an individual who has and continues to provide great counsel, advice, and role modeling, you know, for the ideals that the Queens College Law School stands for. And I just want to commend you for that, and thank you also for your contributions.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, Dave Fields is one of those unsung heroes that not too many people see. He never wears a tie. Part of the reason that he was able to accumulate the capital...
He probably never got a haircut.
But he is invaluable to me, and when I heard about the gift, Dave comes in and talks with me about very confidential matters on a regular basis. And one day, he came in and said, "The college, the law school just got a million-dollar gift." And I said, "That's fabulous." And he said, "Yes, and I got it." And I said, "Well, who did you get it from?" And he said, "I'm providing it." And I said, "How did you get that kind of money?" Well, he was a good investor and cared deeply about the university, and has done extraordinary work at this university. He's just a very, very fine man, and we are a better university because you've been so involved for all of these years, and this is a culmination, in many ways, of your affection and concern about doing something for a place that has really been so fundamental in your own professional development, and we're just deeply grateful for your...
I'm thrilled to be able to do it.
Now you can get a haircut.
Never. No tie, no haircut, never.
I just want to say very quickly that I think that the timing of this announcement, as the new law school opens this fall, I have to tell you, I remember being in the President's office at Queens College when this law school was a folder on Dave Fields's desk. It was Dave Fields that made sure that this law school not only happened, but got a CUNY J.D., a CUNY-wide J.D. from the border regions. Those lawyers in the room understand the importance of the law school having a J.D. from the regions, and it was really Dave working with former Chancellor Joe Murphy that made this happen.
Well, I'm sure if I may have a unanimous vote of approval of this resolution? Anybody? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations.[1433.74][1433.74](APPLAUSE). Dave, would you care to address the committee?
Thank you so much. It's a wonderful thing that you've done. Thank you for that honor.
Thank you.
It's just a great honor. Glad I could help the law school.
Well, thank you very much for your continued service. We will now move on with our agenda, and the next item, I will call on President Wallerstein to present item one B ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four naming opportunities that we present to the committee today. The first and most significant is the naming of the William Newman Department of Real Estate in the Zicklin School of Business at Baruch College. William Newman, as the Chancellor well knows, is the most significant donor to, in the history of Baruch College. In 2004, he made a gift of $24 million that allowed for the creation of the Stephen L. Newman Real Estate Institute, and as part of that gift, there was an understanding that any additional developments in the real estate area would be, he would be accorded the honor of having it named after him. And since we have now developed a full-fledged Department of Real Estate, which is considered second only to the one at NYU in the New York metropolitan area, it seems appropriate that this be named in his honor. So that is the first item.
Thank you. You may continue with all. We're going to vote on as a group.
Thank you. Some, second item also has to do with William Newman. He has made an additional commitment to endow the directorship of a Jewish Studies Center at Baruch, and this is in the form of a charitable gift annuity, but we wish to, in return for his commitment to this charitable gift annuity, to designate the directorship as a named directorship with his name associated with it. So that is the second item. The third item is the naming of a lecture hall in the Newman Vertical Campus after Richard A. Samber, class of 63, who has designated a second-to-die life insurance policy to endow the naming of that room in his honor. And then finally, we have the naming of the large conference room, which actually is the site of the CUNY Board meetings, Room 14220, as the Sandra and Lawrence Simon Conference Center, Conference Room, which is also the result of a significant $2.5 million endowment gift from the Simon family.
Thank you. May I have a motion approval of items one B ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. Thank you and congratulations.
Keep on bringing that money.
President Meiskins, will you join us? And we will introduce items one B fourteen and fifteen, and we will vote on them as a group.
Yes, thank you, but I must say first that you did hear, Dave Fields is a graduate of Queens College. So I would say the President there ought to be making sure that these generous alums are also giving to undergraduate alumnus. But what a wonderful gift he gave to the law school. My two items, the first is the naming of the Deena Perry Professorship in Economics. Deena's on our Foundation Board, has been a very loyal supporter for some time, has been giving over the years, and when the fund got to a certain amount for professorship, we promised her some years ago we would come forward to do that, and that's what we're doing today. The second is the Florence and Bernadette Friedman Endowment for the Social Sciences. This is funding that's available for a number of uses in the social sciences, is actually a support for the dean of social sciences, and in honoring them for their gift for various purposes, including scholarships, we have named the conference room of the social sciences, the Florence Friedman Conference Room. So those are our two proposals.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The motion carries. You can stay there. We're going to move to item C nine, or C one, C four, which is an appointment at Queens College.
Yes, and if I can ask Adam Rockman to come forward and sit here. I think a number of you know that we have a number of senior-level vacancies at the college, which we've moved on to other positions, and one of these vacancies, I'm going to address you today, and that is our Vice President of Student Affairs, Joe Bertolino, who's been with us great years, has accepted a presidency in Vermont for the university, and so we are asking that the Board approve Adam Rockman as the acting or interim Vice President of Student Affairs. Adam has been with us for seven years, seven years. He once before served in this capacity. He once before served in this capacity when Joe Berlino was away on an A's fellowship. He, prior to coming to Queens, was at FIT and at Princeton. And he is one of the people we think was key to the real success we had with our residence hall, the summit. Because from his Princeton experience, he knew what residence life meant, he knew how to deal with it. So I'm confident that Adam is ready for this role and will serve until we, after a national search, can name someone for that post.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations. We will now move to Alexa Loeb, your honor, for items 1C, 16, 17, and 18.
Okay, so I'll do them together?
Yes.
Okay, it's a great honor and pleasure to present for this committee's consideration three candidates for the title of distinguished professor. The title of distinguished professor is conferred on an individual by the university board of trustees in recognition of exceptional scholarly achievement. It's the highest title that CUNY can confer on a full-time faculty member. And distinguished professorships are reserved for faculty with records of exceptional performance by national and international standards of excellence in their profession. There has to be substantial evidence of this exceptional performance, including significant quantities of high-quality work in areas of importance in their disciplines. They comprise a small number of exceptional individuals. We currently have about 140 distinguished professors out of about 7,000 full-time faculty. So the distinguished professors represent about the top 2% of our scholars. A faculty member can make many, many wonderful contributions, including being an excellent scholar, and still not qualify as a distinguished professor. Before being presented to this committee, just to let you know the procedure, a distinguished professor nominee must undergo an extremely rigorous selection procedure. Each nominee must be approved by given campus's local procedures, including the solicitation of at least 10 letters of recommendation by eminent scholars from outside of CUNY. The nomination is then sent for consideration to my office, and I convene a committee of current distinguished professors, which reviews the nominations and makes recommendations to the chancellor. The chancellor then makes recommendations to this committee for your consideration. So there are three people today. The first one is Dagmar Herzog to be distinguished professor at the Graduate Center. Professor Herzog joined the Graduate Center faculty in 2005. Prior to her Graduate Center appointment, she taught at Michigan State University and held fellowships at Harvard and at Princeton's Institute for Advanced Study. She is internationally recognized for her scholarship in the fields of the history of religion, the history of the Holocaust, and the history of gender and sexuality. She's a prolific writer and researcher who's had four books, one of which is very recent, is entitled Sexuality in Europe: A 20th Century History, published by Cambridge University Press in 2011. She has two more books in progress, including one called Reproductive Rights and Disability Rights in the European Union. She completed her doctoral studies at Brown University. Her many awards include, most recently, a 2012 Guggenheim Fellowship. The Graduate Center and the City University of New York will be well-served by Professor Herzog's appointment as distinguished professor. The second one is Jeffrey Parsons as a distinguished professor at Hunter College. Professor Parsons has been a member of the Hunter College faculty since 2000. He is known as a leading global expert in four often overlapping areas of psychological and public health research: sexual health, substance use and abuse, the health of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgendered individuals, and perhaps most prominently, HIV/AIDS prevention. Professor Parsons' many accomplishments include the establishment of the world-renowned Center for HIV/AIDS Educational Studies and Training. His publication and funding records are nothing short of remarkable. He has published over 190 papers in peer-reviewed journals in the past two decades since earning his PhD. He has currently $30 million in external grant funding, which is the highest total of all faculty at his college, and obviously one of the highest in the university. His numerous honors include recognition from the American Psychological Association for outstanding contribution to the advancement of public interest policy. He was also appointed to the White House Office on National AIDS Policy, HIV, and Aging Working Group. He earned his doctorate in developmental psychology from the University of Houston. In addition to his Hunter College appointment, he teaches at the CUNY School of Public Health at Hunter College and at the Graduate Center. Hunter College and the City University of New York will be well-served by Professor Parsons' appointment as distinguished professor. And the third one is John Madison of John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Professor Madison joined John Jay in 1997 as he was completing his doctorate in English and Comparative Literature at Columbia University. He is currently recognized as one of this century's foremost scholars of American literature. Professor Madison was awarded the 2008 Pulitzer Prize in Biography for Eden's Outcasts: The Story of Louisa May Alcott and Her Father, published by Norton. His latest book, which Norton published in January 2012, is a biography of Margaret Fuller. Professor Madison is acclaimed for his original contributions to our understanding of 19th century American literature and culture as well as for the elegant writing, and as well for the elegant writing with which he conveys his insights. In addition to the two biographies already mentioned, Professor Madison has published numerous book chapters and articles. At CUNY, he was the first recipient of the Leon Levy Center for Biography Fellowship, and he's now the center's deputy director. Prior to embarking on his PhD studies, Professor Madison received a law degree from Harvard Law School and was a practicing attorney. And he left all that behind for this.
Smart man.
Yes. John Jay College and the City University of New York will be well-served by Professor Madison's appointment as distinguished professor.
That's phenomenal.
And may I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The motion carries and congratulations. These are just outstanding examples of the faculty here at the university. We will now go to ask President Jeremy Travis to come forward with a naming of John Jay College.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, let me, of course, thank the committee for just approving the nomination of John Madison as distinguished professor at John Jay. It's a great feather in his cap and ours. Let me also thank the chair for allowing this item to be brought onto your calendar at last minute. And thanks as well to Vice Chancellor Waters and Dean Flynn. We are asking for this committee's approval of a naming resolution. We have brought forward to you a proposal that we name a new space in our wonderful new building after Anya and Andrew Shiva. Dr. Andrew Shiva is an alumnus of John Jay College of Criminal Justice. He received both a BA and a master's at John Jay in forensic psychology. He joined the foundation board in 1996. He's been one of our most philanthropic alumni, in fact, the most philanthropic alumnus to date. He has pledged $5 million to support the college's doctoral program in forensic and clinical psychology. And it's in recognition of this gift, part of which has already been received, that we are asking for approval to name the art gallery at the corner of 59th Street and 11th Avenue after Dr. Shiva and his wife, Anya. This gift was announced at our May 8th gala when we launched our campaign, $50 million campaign for the future of justice, and at which time we also unveiled the Lynn and Jules Kroll atrium. So we have significant momentum at John Jay. We have the atrium which this committee has approved, the Elizabeth and Arthur Moranti Faculty Terrace approved by this committee, the Ruby and James Malone Student Conference Room. And now we're asking for approval of the Anya and Andrew Shiva Gallery to be approved as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The motion carries.
Thank you very much. It's the largest gift ever made to John Jay College.
Congratulations. And I want to, while you're here, thank you for a wonderful day I had the opportunity of spending at John Jay. And, you know, we started off with one activity, and as is wonderful about that campus, we had, we ran into all kinds of activities. It was an exhilarating day, and I really loved being there, so thank you.
We were honored to be asked by the chancellor to host the council president's meeting there this morning and again show off the building.
Sure is wonderful.
It's quite a place.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
This completes our policy calendar. Now we will move on to the chancellor's university reports. Please note that there is an additional appointment on the revised agenda, item 1C8. I will now call on President William Kelly to present item 1C1, An Appointment at the Graduate Center.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm with the committee. Good afternoon, early evening. It's a great, it's a great pleasure to present Dr. Linda Mariens as a candidate for appointment as vice president for institutional advancement at the Graduate Center and University Center. And I'd like to ask Dr. Mariens to join me, if she would, please. Thank you, Linda. This appointment is the result of an 11-month nationwide search, during which we interviewed more than a dozen highly qualified candidates. That degree of care and patience speaks to the importance of this appointment for the Graduate Center and bears testimony to our enthusiasm for Dr. Mariens. She comes to us from SUNY Stony Brook, where she served as chief of staff to President Shirley Strum-Kenny. In that capacity, she managed President Kenny's highest priority initiatives, oversaw the university's fundraising efforts, and directed the Stony Brook Foundation's Board of Trustees. Prior to that service, Dr. Mariens was assistant vice president for advancement at Stony Brook, and that role she was responsible for corporate and foundation relations, the university's annual fund, and for prospect research. Her background, I'm pleased to say, is in English literary study. She holds a BA for Manhattanville, an MA and PhD from the University of Maryland. She's taught at Bucknell and at La Salle, where she was a tenured member of the English Department. She's the author of two influential books and serves as the executive secretary of the Society for Eighteenth Century Studies. As you will gather, Dr. Mariens has a breadth of experience that commends her to our faculty and our foundation board members alike. In the short time that she has been with us, we have found her enthusiasm contagious and her judgment invaluable and of great importance. She's a pro stylist of the first order. With great confidence then and without reservation, I recommend for your consideration the candidacy of Dr. Linda Mariens. Thank you.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Comments? If being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The motion carries and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much for joining us today. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Will Dr. William Fritz, senior vice president and provost, please join us to present items 1C2, An Appointment at the College of Staten Island.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'm real pleased this afternoon to recommend to the board the appointment of Mary Beth Riley to the position of vice president for enrollment management. I think everyone probably in the room knows Mary Beth. She served at the College of Staten Island as director of recruitment and admissions in 2000, and then in 2008, she was promoted to assistant vice president for enrollment management. Prior to joining CSI, she's had admissions experience throughout CUNY, serving here in the central office at Brooklyn and at Lehman Colleges. She holds a master's in education from Baruch and ABS in marketing from Manhattan and AA and liberal arts and sciences from Bergen Community College. And really, she's presided over, you know, some significant changes in enrollment at the College of Staten Island, not only in terms of the quantity, but more importantly, the quality. If you look just at the last five years, we've had a 67% increase in baccalaureate admissions, an 84% increase in the total number of baccalaureate students on campus, and a 23% increase in the number of students earning a baccalaureate degree. And all of the major enrollment management offices that report to Mary Beth have really been, I think, the key factors in producing that change.
Thank you.
Yes.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations. Dr. Fritz, can you continue with your next?
Right, okay. I'm also pleased to recommend to the board the appointment of Dr. Kenneth Boyd to the position of acting vice president for institutional advancement and external affairs. Dr. Boyd has served at the College of Staten Island as the assistant vice president for institutional advancement since February of 2011. Prior to joining CSI, he served as vice president for institutional advancement at Cabrini College, Valley Forge Military Academy and College, and the University of Sciences in Philadelphia. He holds a doctor of education in higher education management from the University of Pennsylvania, as well as a J.D. from Dickinson School of Law, and has actually served for a time on the bench as a senior district judge presiding over civil, criminal, and miscellaneous litigation in Delaware County, Pennsylvania.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations and congratulations. Thank you, Dr. Fritz. President Ricardo Fernandez, please join us to present items 1C3, your new provost at Lehman College. Good evening.
It's my pleasure to recommend for your consideration Dr. Annie Morbel Sosa for the position of provost and senior vice president of academic affairs at Lehman College. Dr. Morbel Sosa comes to us, most recently, from the University of Texas at El Paso, where she had been dean of science for the past six years. And prior to that, she held an administrative position, was also a dean at Georgia Southern University, dean of the Allen E. Paulson College of Science and Technology, and prior to that, another position at Cal Poly, California. I'm very pleased that she is also not a stranger to New York. She's a Yankee fan. It's hard to do in...
El Paso.
In El Paso. And one of the things that I want to say that I was very, also very pleased and happy to see in her extensive record as a faculty member, researcher, scholar, is that she has orchestrated some amazing work between the University of Texas El Paso and the El Paso Community College, which is one of the largest community colleges in the country, has, I think, seven or eight campuses. And the relationship that exists between that institution, that branch of the UT system, and those community colleges, I think, is remarkable. I'm looking forward to having some of that work assist us in the work we're trying to do with the office.
Thank you. And may I have a motion for approval?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations and congratulations. Thank you very much. We will now...
Finish it.
That finishes it.
Yes, well, you finished it.
Section two, it's, okay. We're going to the end of our agenda. Section two advises the committee of several appointments of faculty with immediate tenure or reappointments with early tenure pursuant to the bylaws. These items appear for information purposes only and do not require a report or a vote. Madam Vice Chancellor, does that conclude our meeting, our agenda?
It certainly does. And in the interest of time, I will forego my 21-page report that I had prepared for tonight. I wish everyone a very pleasant summer.
May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Have a great and wonderful summer.